Remind you of what the date is today.
Ninth of June.
The ninth of June, six o'clock. We are here for this study session to discuss financing alternatives for the school district. And we're excited to have Matt Doug Dell here to walk us through some things. And if we don't have any cameras, we should do a quick roll call. So those that are listening.
Are they not working?
We're working.
Fourth one just popped out too.
You're kidding?
No.
I just got a text from someone asking if it was on YouTube, so.
I don't know if it's on YouTube. Is it on YouTube today?
Oh.
Is it on YouTube today?
It is. I've got the audio on YouTube.
Yeah, it's audio on YouTube.
Oh, it's on YouTube.
Cameras are down.
Cameras are down. Anyway, so let's start the ground table, let everybody know who's here. We'll start Tyler.
Tyler Booth, board member. Corey Holmes, board member.
Jason Watt, director.
Garrett Peterson, director.
Mary Ann Allen, board member.
Kim Dickerson, board member.
Keith Johansson, business administrator.
Tom Hanson, board member.
All right, we'll jump right into it. Matt, please push.
Thank you. Would you prefer that I stand here?
Yeah, no, you come up.
Let's join the.
See all these cushions?
Sit by the curl table.
He's the one that brought him, so he knows.
Oh, thank you.
I'll be.
Thank you, Summer.
Oh, is that Randy?
Yeah.
Justin Matt?
Right. Now we can jump in.
Hey, Randy? You've got this member, I see.
It's a Monday night.
What's that?
You don't have a log?
No. Traffic was rough.
Yeah. Not a good street.
Did you come downhill?
Coming downhill, actually, because it's a little.
Well, thank you for having us. It's a privilege to work with the district and such financing history. And we're pleased to just share some alternatives and maybe do just some education and answer some questions. Wanted to just start, and Randy, please fill in wherever you'd like to. Actually, it'd be better if you do most of the talking.
I don't want a lawyer. Need that Zoom mute button.
Right. You know, in kind of using the metaphor of arrows in your quiver, I would say that school districts have the fewest arrows available for financing. When you compare yourself to other departments of Utah in particular. This page illustrates all of various types of bonds that can be issued by local governments and districts. And really, as you look at the types of bonds, whether they be general obligation bonds, which the district is familiar with, there's a whole other side of bonding that is unavailable to the district. Sales tax revenue bonds, assessment bonds, increment bonds, and enterprise bonds. Those are bonds that are very frequently issued by counties, by special districts, and larger districts and cities. And really, for school districts, you only have two. And that would be your general obligation bonds and lease revenue bonds. And so as the district considers creating a local building authority, really, it's just putting one more arrow in your quiver. Not necessarily, you're not going to shoot all arrows, but it's another arrow and an option for the district.
Matt, before you go on, on the lease revenue, it talks about the annual appropriations from the general. They capital fund?
That, that's a good point, Pete. Yes, that is a capital fund to make the lease pay.
It can be both.
Yes. Okay.
It can be both. General fund is meant to signal, like legally available funds. Does that make sense? For budgeting purposes, you'll use your capital outlay.
Right.
But if you were a school, a county or a city, you could use any source of unencumbered general fund monies to make that lease. But you're not pledging.
Okay.
Every year, you're deciding to appropriate or budget to make. Good question.
So it's general and capital?
Yeah, for you guys, it could be both. Your budgeting, I'm sure, will plan for the capital outlay because it qualifies.
Good question. Any other questions on this, this page?
So really quick, so essential purpose, we can use this for new constructions and upgrades, infrastructure upgrades of existing buildings.
Yes, yes. And Randy will clock through the legal perspective on that. Because the legal structure is compared to a general obligation bond. But we'll definitely get into that. And tell us how much and how deep you'd like us to get into a general obligation bond. Perhaps we feel comfortable with the whys and hows and lets.
Yeah, I hear both pretty straight up.
Yeah, okay, so we can be brief. I just realized these pages are not numbered, but the page that illustrates the investors and issuers is probably helpful. Where on a general obligation bond, and I think this is more of a jugular difference between a lease revenue bond and a general obligation bond. Where as the school district, you issue the bonds, the bonds are secured by property taxes. And investors purchase those bonds and get the capital. And so it's a very straightforward financing vehicle. And you'll see as we get to the illustration of the lease revenue bond, there's a little bit more nuance to it. As we get into lease revenue bonds, again, a very viable alternative and considerations for issuing a lease revenue bond really are numerous. And overlap a lot with general obligation bonds for facilities. I would say most recently within the state, there's been more activity in lease revenue bond issuance than there has in the past. And a lot of that is because, again, it's a very viable alternative. But also, just through the lens of we've passed an election, but because of construction costs being so inflationary, a lot of school districts have not been able to build their promised projects from a past election. And so in order to keep those promises, they'll pick it up with lease revenues. And that's actually happened quite a bit.
I was gonna say, was that Toowila? Is that what they ended up doing?
Uh, yes, yep. Yeah, Toowila and Canyons and Alpine and.
Park City.
Park City, as well as Provo.
All of their lease revenue bonds in the last 24 months, huh?
In fact, I have a list.
Have done combinations, right?
Yes.
Like Park City was general obligation and lease revenue. Toowila, it was general obligation, construction cost tildum, so that made.
Yes.
But school districts are also looking at lease revenue because they're not passing general obligation bonds, right?
Yes, yes. It's, and that's one of the differences between the two is a lease revenue bond does not require a vote. Although there is a very clear definitive statutory process that you have to go through to issue a lease revenue bond.
So could I just put context?
Of course.
That might help. When you hear lease revenue bond, because you haven't heard that a lot in the past, maybe as a school district, you may be. Oh, this is a creative kind of financing. It's an end run, you know, to get to different financing. And when Matt showed that first, you know, different options, you notice sales tax bonds, right? Sales tax bonds were only a viable option for local governments in, starting in early 2000s. Before that time, lease revenue bonds were constant, if that makes sense. They were the predominant way of financing city hall, libraries, golf courses, rodeo grounds, different pieces. One, through sales tax, which required a constitutional loan adjustment, those became the more predominant financing tool for cities and for counties. You don't have that. So I just wouldn't want you to think that lease revenue is some new founded crazy way of getting your financing done. It's exceptionally common. It just hasn't been as predominant in Utah because cities, counties can do sales tax bonds. Of course, you don't get sales tax, so you don't have the ability to pledge that revenue stream, so.
That's very helpful.
Just to give you some context, lease revenue bond.
And really quick on the revenue bonds, so like enterprise revenue, isn't that what Hoover is doing right now?
That's water and sewer.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, those are net revenue pledges of utility systems. You pay O and M first.
Yeah.
And then you pay bond. Of course, you don't have that either because you don't get impact fees. Nor do you get to charge for any utilities.
So we don't even have that option, just wanted to clarify.
Sorry for that.
No, actually, Randy, I think maybe on the next page on the general kind of structure.
So now, this day, why wouldn't everybody just do? Why would?
Thanks for asking that, I was wondering.
With all the headings that we've been through in the last four years, why would we even, uh?
That's.
I have that same question. Why, why are we looking at this now?
You'll care for me?
Please.
Since I have a little bit of a personal status. I give a little bit of a, yes, bond council, but also resident, living here.
Sure.
It's a very legitimate question. A GEO bond, all else equal, I'm stepping on Matt's toes here just real quick, will deliver a lower interest rate. However, lease revenue bonds are so well accepted in the market, it's not a big amount of distinction. I mean, where were you saying, maybe 15?
That, yeah, the differential in the interest rate has really thinned out and it can change, right? That relationship changes, but lately it's been very, yeah.
So two reasons that you do a GEO bond is number one, it's nice as a school board to say, we're doing what our community mandated us to do.
Right.
And we get.
Therefore, raising the taxes is a community.
The school together.
Yep, yep. And, and the, and the lower interest rate, all else equal, okay? But when you're talking about the narrow band right now, and this is where I'm giving, I'm taking my bond council hat off and also adding just being a resident, it's not illegitimate to just do the whole thing. Because you have headroom in your capital facilities property tax, which you have to go through a truth and taxation process. But you also have a ton of new growth. I mean, in, or building in Wasatch County, the assessor has not caught up, right? I mean, it's going to come up. And so your existing tax property amounts, it's going to deliver more revenue, which again, has a truth and taxation issue. But essentially, you have the prerogative or the ability to say, we, you know, the community was really, really close, but didn't get that to us. And partially, that might be because people without kids or who knows what the different reasons are. But if you have the political will, right, to say, we just. Can you see what costs have done since our failed election? Can you see how much more it is? Then, there's two ways. One way is to say, let's do the election and it fails, and put people on notice. We're going to use the building authority statute as our backup. If we have to, that's what we will do. When you do that, you will have a higher notice requirement, a higher hearing. You gotta do this big ugly ad in the paper, we are bonding for a failed election project. But it doesn't allow anybody to use, you know, change the discretion of the board to do that. So that's one viable alternative. Is to do a combo, right? Do we reduce the tax impact on our GEO and then fill the balance with lease revs in a way that maybe reduces that tax impact to make that work? I think that's what you're exploring. Then the third one is, let's just do a building authority bond. Take the truth and taxation issue and make sure we don't affect services of the budget and get these buildings done. And if interest rates were to change or something were to make them more distinct, you're probably not going to refinance your bonds for. Shouldn't say that. But they're so narrow. Right now, you know, why, 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 why not? But rates might change and you could do an election. You could say, you now have our land, we now have, or we already have your land, we already have our school. Help us get a GEO and then save taxpayer money is the sole argument.
Yeah. So.
Randy, correct me if I'm wrong, but a while ago, we discussed this, that with rates on the rise, doing a lease, doing a lease revenue. Or maybe that's a map, we could actually lock in that rate sooner than we could lock in a rate on a GEO bond.
Absolutely. A GEO bond pending a successful election, you're issuing at the earliest in December, and he's probably going to tell you to wait till first of January with a supply issue and lock in your rates in July, or January, I'm sorry.
Whereas if we did a lease revenue, we could lock that in potentially earlier, but correct?
Yeah, you could do that within the next few weeks.
Oh, even without establishing the LVA first?
Yeah.
We can lock it?
Well.
Sorry, no.
It'll take a little longer than that.
Depend on the method you use for sale. If you had a private placement, you might be able to get a rate locked immediately, you know, that let you close with. But if you're going to the market for probably a month and a half, a week of doing that, for this size, that's probably what Matt's going to recommend. But I just, I just want to give you some context on your political.
Oh, it's helpful, that's very helpful.
The purpose of this meeting, right?
He just answered, right?
So sorry for that.
No, I thought that was really a good discussion. And I think we do focus on interest rates a lot with bonding because certainly interest is a huge component of bonding. But where we've been in an inflationary period of construction and, I mean, you know, the cost of projects can certainly exceed, you know, interest rate.
So it seems like we should do it now.
So can you dive in a little bit deeper? Because like establishing the local building authority, you're saying we're six weeks out from possibly being able to lock a rate. But going pri, what did you say, private market?
Yeah, you could approach it.
Is the rate higher in that scenario?
Yeah, for this size, probably. How long you want to go out? That's Matt's.
Yeah, it's, you know, there's, we could certainly do a combination. And banks are active bidders on bonds and single purchasers. And we have some very strong bank purchasers in the state and their terms can be very flexible. And, you know, there's some cost savings from just the cost of issuing a bond through a private placement versus a public offering. Public offering, you're going to the open market, you have to get a bond rating, you have to high ride, broker your bonds, sell your bonds to investors. But there's a, there's kind of a crossover point where at a certain amount, your public offering will deliver you a lower rate. All things taken into consideration. That's an analysis we do, we can do.
But still locking your rate six weeks to eight weeks from now is much sooner than January.
Go ahead.
Is there any advantage to establishing a building authority doing a lease revenue bond than trying to pass a general obligation bond? To try to, to lower the interest rate with, within that payoff of lease revenue bond?
There's precedence for that. Salt Lake County, I remember you called the children's museum, was a project that the electorate voted down. And so the county still wanted to get that in. I mean, I see a difference of essentiality between children's museum and a school, but nonetheless, the county did a building authority to do that. And then when they did an election, a couple of years, two or three years later, they asked you to do a refunding, convert that to a GEO. Because at that point, there was a more.
Big gap.
Bigger gap.
So if we got into this way, a waste and there was a big gap, you can come in every year and try to pass a general obligation bond.
It changes the story.
Refinancing.
You're saying, you're paying this one way or another. We think we have a lower interest rate, will you help us out by giving us that?
Yeah. You went to county did that with their jail facility, started it as a lease revenue project and then refunded it with a general obligation bond.
Was that how we did our jail here?
The police department there on Main Street where they. I believe so.
Sales tax.
Was it South Texas? Thank you.
Right, that makes sense because there was a.
Yeah, they could do that, we.
So they've talked a little, this is, came out of huge detail, but they've talked about the difference in interest rates. With a GEO bond, we would be able to tie into the state's AAA rating and that helps our rates. With a lease revenue bond, it's, we're on our own, it's our rating. So that.
Double A three, how high do they, do they go?
There's a few steps in between a double A three and a triple A.
Very highly rated still.
I mean, I think those are the details that we can continue to discuss. And Matt, you would help us build out the models to see.
We can quantify it.
Yeah, I think everybody's aware.
Very clearly.
And these rates probably absorb the overall Fed rate. But it's no secret, it's not a secret, that interest rates are going to increase the next couple of years.
A lot of work, so.
I think all of us are in our minds wondering, the longer we wait, the higher interest rate will be.
Yeah, that's the question that I had, was like, so you, you know, even if you have a little bit higher interest rate now by going out with a lease revenue bond, by the time you go out for a general obligation bond, that interest rate could pass that.
Oh, yeah. I mean, if you ran the models and forecasted today versus projected rate in January, that might tell a story.
Yeah.
Yeah, if we could have issued last November.
Yeah.
To this July, August.
How about 2019? How about that 2019 interest rate?
And the cost of.
Would have been nice. Should have done it all in.
But I do, it's a little bit of speculative crystal ball, right, on what interest rates you're going to do. And then it's also a political, not political in the sense of parties, policy driven debate, right? Is it, are you comfortable saying, we really want to lock in the construction costs? We really want to get this moving. Let's use our building. You'll take some heat for that, right? Because you don't have the mandate. But you were elected to get, you know, things, things like that done. The alternative would be, let's wait for the election. But I just would advise you, in reality, this is just political advice, not legal. If you get a failed election and you still issue again, your winds of storm, you know, you used to have discretion as the board to say, you could even say it ahead of time, guys, even if this fails, we're intending to do that to help. But it's a different, it's a different. Than it is in front. A successful election makes everything easy for you. A failed election makes it even more difficult than it is right now.
Well, this is the problem with politics, that, you know, legislators or lawmakers look at policy and they think through the financial lens or the budget lens and not the family lens. You know, we're here to help families and students and kids. I mean, that's, that's why we're here, right? It's our priority. And so, you know, when you say, well, it's.
That's our, that's our purpose.
That's our purpose, so.
And if your interest. Isn't very big and rates are certainly moving. It just helps, it just helps that policy. Now, again, I'm being Randy, Wasatch County resident of the morning, being awkward. I believe in the new school, I believe in the needs and I think it's passed. But I just wanted you to understand that you have that capacity.
But sadly, not everybody goes through the lens of the students.
They don't. And a lot of people that are moving in will continue to not. People moving in are changing. Won't change the number of students, but it's going to change, maybe make elections harder.
Harder.
But if we go into the election, that's why I'm wondering if a lot of districts are using the combination method of, hey, we need this to be done, we want your say in this. And so they're doing a combo, like, hey, this is, this is how it lines up. We still want your input, we still want to hear from you, but this is the amount we're going to have to do in less lease revenue. Is that kind of why we're seeing the combo come out as well?
In part, and, I mean, there's, there's a, there's a, it would show coming back after a failed election and kind of value adding or reducing what you're, you know, sometimes triggers the sentiment of a positive vote.
Hey, we're trying to save money.
But I don't, I don't know that we have that same story. In other words, we still need the high school and unfortunately, our costs are now X because of what happened in 2019. So what would be interesting is what was the tax impact, right? In 2019, compared to the tax impact by this combo? You might be using a combo to hit a tax impact that may sell that a little bit better. I mean, that's a fair, a fair question.
That's kind of what our thought process was with it is, okay, we're asking the community, X. It's a lot less than, you know, what we originally asked for on our previous bonds. So that's where I see that combo working is, hey, we're mitigating your tax impact.
We're saying this is still in need. Yes, all these factors play in, but we're trying to do as least impact as possible. I mean, we need to kind of go back to your handout. Like the property taxes secure GEO bonds. This one, it says the lease payments are the one, so it's secured by the lease payments?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a legal fiction.
Yeah, can you just try and simplify that word?
I have to tell you the story here. So there's a, there's a constitutional rule that you cannot go into debt beyond one year without an election. That's the standard rule for all governmental entities. There's a couple of exceptions. One is a limited stream of revenues, the sales tax, water and sewer, you know, utility revenues. The legislature and the courts have read, well, that's not a general obligation debt. You're living into a stream of revenues that you're within control. So that, that's an exception to that general rule. The other big one is a lease revenue. So here's how a lease revenue bond works. And the story was, you know, when this was codified into state code was Iron County wanted to get a jail built in the seventies, early seventies. Well, you can imagine going to residents and saying, we want to increase your property tax. Build a new jail. And the problem was, is the jail had so many troubles. What one judge called it, what do you call it, a dungeon or something? They were having civil rights actions and having to pay prisoners damages because the jail was falling apart. But yet, no one would, you know, they had, they had two failed elections. And so they're like, somehow we got to get, we got to get this jail built. And so what they utilize is an exception and said, okay, we will issue bonds, we'll give the jail as collateral to the investors. And then we will appropriate in our budget a lease payment that magically equals the cost of the bonds, right? And so technically, that's why I say it's a legal fiction, the county could have said, we're not paying that lease payment this year. They have the legal right to do that. And if they do that, they have to vacate the jail, turn it over to bondholders and suffer a damaged credit rating because you can do the same thing on your mortgage. Does that make sense? But there is no forced pledge of revenue. I'm sure we all can consider some force measure. Wouldn't make your lease payment at a particular time. But investors are so familiar with this problem, especially for an essential building. What would you do? Where would the students go if you didn't make your lease payment? But we are complying with that constitutional law rule to say, it's actually an annual appropriation lease payment every year. Is that boring enough? I talk.
No, I'm nerdy enough and a history nerd that I actually like learning about that. So it's in Utah State Constitution.
Yeah. And it was ruled on by the Supreme Court as a legitimate. Codified by the legislature. So it's the, it's the building, local building authority.
So another example besides the Iron County jail falling apart and they had to, couldn't pass a bond election to do it. Provo school district has a high school that's sinking. And another school that's unsafe and they cannot pass a bond election to fix it. So they went this route.
And if you go to the second to last page, that's a list of.
I think that's a good place to jump, so.
Yeah, same. Great presentation.
I like that. Probably everything thrown away. That sounds like we're in, we're in the conversation now.
Yeah, so I thought this would be helpful just to see that, and this is only school districts. There's many, many cities, many, many counties that have issued lease revenue bonds. But it's, like I say, you can, you can see that over the years, the amounts have been increasing as well as the frequency has been increasing. And a lot of that is certainly by increasing construction costs.
Seriously.
Isn't that interesting how?
Yeah, look at the dates. I mean, there was, half of them are in the last three years.
And there's more failed, there's more failed elections than there have been. And that's because, at least in part, what the legislature continues to do to make them different. Your election came out in 2019, right after all the truth and taxation pieces came. So everybody gets these little, they're in the paper and you get a note in the mail. Your fire district taxes are going up eight dollars for. But you get about 10 of those.
Everybody got their property taxes.
And then you get your property tax and your assessed value has gone up and all that truth and taxation. You're like, holy smokes, I'm spending, I got a $3,000 higher property tax bill than last year. This is ridiculous. This is ridiculous, what can I take a swing at?" Well, the only remaining thing to take a swing at was the school district election, and it's the timing. It's going to be the same way.
Same thing.
Well, and that's my question, since you live here, you're probably fully aware, we're going to get half of the valley increased because of our little blip in July.
Little blip.
The little hoops. And also the state code hoops of five to 12 years older over state statute.
We have no chance to do a GO bond.
Well, I'm wondering if, so, so I'm wondering, like...
Why do we keep doing this?
If we establish this as another option, and then we decided what our options are, like, from a resident perspective, I'm just saying this because this is...
For someone who's in favor of the school district.
They're going to vote, yeah. But this is what, I mean, Tyler, you and I have talked about it, it comes down tonight. It comes down to their monthly bill.
Yeah, I think the next steps from the board, any other questions for Matt?
Oh.
I've taken all of Matt's time.
Should we quickly go over this, seeing as it is a public meeting, explain this in line?
Process.
And the reason why I say that is because the board has a retreat on Monday, and so...
Do you guys put me back?
I think they could, they're available by phone if necessary, if there are any questions or follow-up.
What are we talking, time on that thing?
It's afternoon.
Two o'clock.
I thought it got pushed to three.
Two to 10?
I thought we were going to start at three for you, or was it?
It was noon.
Then we pushed it. Anyway, Matt, so walk through the process. Finish up your, and we're not rushing, finish up your slides, and then, you know, all of this dialogue will continue in a, in a retreat.
Another meeting.
In another meeting, yeah. But I think the main purpose was, let's get everyone, you've had a lot of sidebars on this, and, you know, coming out of our future schools project conclusion, we just ran that over the last six to nine months, and the conclusion was, secure the funds for a new high school, you know, 12 to 24 months. And so this is in line with that in understanding our levers to secure the funds. So, go ahead, please.
Oh, absolutely, and Randy, in certain, I, you know, Randy has drafted all of the creation documents, and, you know, just telling you down to the very basics is basically there's a resolution creating the local building authority, and once that is adopted at a, after that, is there a minimum period?
No.
Yeah.
No, but I think we're scheduled to be, have an action item on the fourteenth next week to create the local building authority. That doesn't obligate you to issue bonds, it doesn't...
It's an option.
Go ahead, just explain it since we're being recorded, just what the process is.
A local building authority is a nonprofit corporation, it has, it has no revenues of itself, and it is solely intended to create the option of lease revenue financing. You, as the board, are also the board of the building authority, you simply effectively almost remove your hat and then in one public meeting, and you take action as a building authority, and then you return to your normal school board. So you're not ceding control to anyone other than yourselves, but that building authority is the bonding entity, right? So that's the entity that will issue the bonds. What they will, what the building authority will pledge to those bonds is collateral in the project spinning, it's the real estate, and that annual appropriation lease concept to the board, to the building authority.
Is that collateral, the new school we built, or our existing capital that we have?
It's what the bonds build.
So how does that work, so on updates, it's the collateral, it's the building authority?
Yeah, so if you do a combo, let's say a portion of it is done with the GO and a portion, we'll have to, we'll have to carve up the collateral in a way that, you know, meets standards to allow you to legitimately fit the constitutional, I mean, don't your eyes roll back, that, we can do that, that's not terribly difficult. But if you finance building, then it becomes easy, you just use that, use a ground lease, it's not forever, and that's, that's the financing tool in a nutshell. But you would have a building, you have to meet as a board, create the building authority. Once you create it, then we will go and get articles of incorporation filed, and come back to you as a school board in your next meeting, and approve officers and adopt bylaws. And again, the building authority, that's when you do lease revenue financing, it just lays dormant until you, as a school board, trigger it to use anything. But that's the, that's the, it's a two-meeting process to create the building authority. But on that second meeting, when the building authority is created, if you were on an expedited schedule, you could right after adopting bylaws, move into adopting bond resolutions and moving forward.
So if we pass the sum to you, say, we're just doing this to have it in place in case we decide to do the lease revenue.
Exactly. And your cost to maintain the building authority, I think, is a hundred dollars a year to keep your corporate component, so it's not a drain on finances or expenses. It has, it has no function until and if you, as a school board, decide to issue lease revenue.
And then at number three, the school board holds the public meeting. In state code, does it dictate that we have to have 15 days, 30 days? What does that, what does code say for LBA's?
The, it's 30 days. Well, a public hearing is for the issuance of bonds, and so you hold that until two weeks after you get the notice published. So here at Wasatch, if we use the wave, it's a Wednesday paper, so depending on when we can get into there, you couldn't hold that hearing until two weeks after it gets published.
But that's to, that's to distribute bonds, right? Or the notice.
That's for bonds.
Yeah, that's not to create, that's what we're trying to say.
There's no need for a public hearing for the authority, because it has no power and no function until you, until you do bonds. Other than that, you know, a hundred dollars a year fee to maintain your corporate existence.
To have that kind of pointed out, like, this is an opportunity, like we, like Tom was talking about, the FSP showed us that we're supposed to secure funds. This is a method of us trying to look into securing funds, but for transparency reasons, like, this is not, we're not saying, like, "Go at it." We're saying we're securing a method, but we have not done anything with that method.
Well, I think for the record, Tyler's saying, "Go at it."
We do have Tyler's opinion on that.
But it's proven...
But that's what I'm saying is...
It's proven that.
One of three ways for us.
If it's even a possibility, your calendar would be delayed, you know, and interest rates potentially moving away from you if you hadn't taken these steps now.
Yeah, exactly.
And I would say your counterpart districts in the state, you know, we listed here, there's others that basically have done the same, because they've created the authority, so it's that arrow in the quiver, so that if, if the opportunity is there, and, you know, to shoot that arrow, it's a matter of...
Lower the bomb, not the red flag trigger.
He's what we're getting at.
No, I was just going to say, about interest rates going up and how this might help us get a better rate sooner. An even bigger factor might be that, you know, if we could be out to bid on a new high school in November, December, rather than wait till February, March, at least, do it in the primer. It might make a, you know, 10 to 15% difference in the cost of the high school. Because if we can get out before, you know, while people are hungry and looking, it makes a huge difference on the cost of the bid.
And as long as we're on the record, I would add that a building authority does not entitle you to raise property taxes. A general obligation bond does, right? The board would retain discretion at how much and when, if ever, to raise property taxes to make that lease payment.
Through the truth and taxation process.
Through the taxation process.
That's the difference.
So the local building authority is a very transparent statutory-driven process that many, many...
And that's why the rate difference was not great. We just did a state, the state of Utah did lease revenue bonds that we priced yesterday.
Today?
Today. And it was not very far off at all their AAA GO bond rating. And those are a double A rated bond, state's building, so it would be very similar.
Like, in actual numbers, like, what is the difference? Rate difference?
You'll have to, he'll quantify that for you.
Yeah, just, you know, it changes every day.
I'll just get trouble.
If it were today, I, it's one of those things where, you know, I need to run it to give you very specifics, but recently, we looked at it a few weeks ago, and it was maybe 15 basis points around there, so 15 hundredths of a percent. It's been as wide, I would say, as, you know, 50 half a percent, and potentially wider at certain periods, but it's, there's, there's been good appetite for bonds, and rates have been low, but as rates go up, we do see that relationship now, as rates, as rates go up.
Okay. Robert, any other questions?
I do, I have one more. Just because I want to clarify and make sure I'm understanding correctly. So if, in the future, we establish our LBA and we go and decide to do a lease revenue bond, because we've established an LBA, any bond amount doesn't technically count against our debt ratio as a district, right?
Correct.
Okay. Just wondering, I was wondering about that.
Preserves debt limit.
Other needs?
Other, other needs.
You do...
I don't know.
No, I was just going to say, with a bond rating, like any personal credit score, it is included in your overall debt picture, which is taking into consideration, but as far as the statutory...
Limits of debt ratio.
Four percent of your...
Or asset value. But then again, just as a resident, repeat what was said, you're going to have a lot of people, the county doesn't have the manpower, and it's not a knock against the county, it does, to reassess every single property every year. But what you do know is that a significant chunk are going to catch that wave and see that in their property taxes right as they're headed into the election. Just no way around it.
Well, aren't they going to see the increase of what they've been doing in July? Like, that was the whole point, I thought of Todd.
Some of it. I mean, what is it already showing?
It was like 17,000 parcels.
It's not showing yet.
It's not showing yet. I think they're doing it online at the end of June, right, Keith?
I don't know, I looked this morning, there wasn't, there wasn't any number out there.
I think they'll, if it's end of June, it'll be online, everyone's going to get them mailed in July.
I remember at one point thinking, "Hey, at the county's assessed value, I would sell my house." Now it's like, nope, I would not sell my house. Right? And that's going to catch up.
Okay, great, we'll conclude the meeting. Thanks for coming.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Where's John?
I think...
We'll take those home, there are plenty of people that will...
Sugar-free, sugar-free, fat-free.
Really quick. I...